For January 22, 2024, Select Board Meeting. Call to order, roll call attendance.
Hard copy here.
Andrew here.
Scott here.
Gabriela here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand on one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval. Any changes, additions to the agenda?
Madam Chairperson, with the consent agenda, can we move the item in reference to security of the public safety and recreation outside of consent?
Yes, I sort of expected somebody might.
Okay, thank you.
So that's item F, I believe?
Yes.
That is.
Okay.
And I have one item to add in non-public for personnel.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the January 24th Agenda meeting as amended.
I would second that.
Keep an eye.
Hard copy.
Scott.
Gabriela, I will move on to public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, then I, in, online? Read the instructions then. Looks like no one. So, moving on to public hearing and invited guests, is there anyone from the school board here this evening? Doesn't look like it. Then we'll move on. Tim Dunn is a project manager of the Division of Project Development at Highway Design at the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and he will present details of the planned culvert replacement project on Route 4 in Barrington. And this is scheduled for 2026, so if we would come up here, or the party, either.
Yes. And you just need to press the singular button on the top of that, turn it green.
Whichever you would like to be at.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I think we're going to present from over here. If you give me just a moment, I'm going to get my.
There you are.
Thank you all for having us. My name is Tim Dunn. I'm with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. I'm a project manager in the Bureau of Highway Design. We're here today to talk about technically two projects on US Route 4 here in Barrington. One is a culvert replacement and one is a bridge replacement. The culvert is Caldwell Brook and the bridge is Oyster River, both on US 4. So as I mentioned, my name's Tim Dunn. I am the NHGOT project manager. In the, wherever there is Ron Kleiner, he's also with the department in the Bureau of Bridge Design. And then with me also who will be presenting is Steve Langivan from GPI. He is the department's consultant. The project location, I don't know how well you can see, and I can't, I can't point because of the screen. On the left of the screen, there where it says 16402 Culvert, that is Caldwell Brook. And on the right of the screen where it says 41415, that is the Oyster River Bridge. Right in between, the road to the north is Topaz Drive. So we're about a quarter mile, I believe, west of the Lee Roundabout. So you can see the Lee Roundabout in the picture there on the right side. This makes, is a little bit easier to see the brook and the river, and we called out the culvert and bridge locations there as well. So all of our projects really start with a purpose and need statement. In this case, we have two projects that are going to be worked on together. The Caldwell Brook culvert is to address hydraulic deficiencies with the culvert as demonstrated by previous flooding, and for Oyster River, to address the structural deficiencies of the bridge as demonstrated by its inclusion on the state's red list. And I like to focus on that we are in the alternatives analysis phase. We're currently evaluating different alternatives. Oh, I shouldn't say that. We're moving into evaluating alternatives. All alternatives and impacts are being considered at this point in the project's life, and we're evaluating those before we pick a preferred alternative. That's why we're here. So public input is a key part of that process. So any feedback that the Select Board has, or any member of the public, can feel free to reach out to me and let me know. No decisions have been made at this point. I just want to make sure that's clear. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Steve, and he is going to talk about the project specifics.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Steve. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to point here, I'm going to point as I speak, so I'll try to apologize for returning back on your times, but I'm going to be pointing at the screen at times. Anyway, so as Tim mentioned, there's two structures in this project area, this project area here. And the first one I'm going to talk about is the 16402 project, is the culvert. You can see it's just west of Topaz Drive here, and this is. So a little bit about the culvert. Anyway, so this, this project all started back after the Mother's Day storm in 2006, and that resulted in some flooding of the properties all in the area around Topaz Drive and in the project area, and some overtopping of Route 4. This structure actually turns 50 this year. It's built in 1974. I can see the pictures there, the picture on the left shows the 54-inch corrugated metal pipe that, that's the invert, so that's the south side of Route 4. And the picture on the right is the north side of Route 4, and that is the, the. The second structure I'm going to talk about is, it's not one we'll be working on, but it's within the project area. You can see on that picture there, that's a Topaz Drive Bridge. It invades Oyster River under Topaz Drive. And so basically, Topaz Drive is like in the middle of the two structures that we're looking to replace. And it's about three quarters of a mile west of the Lee Roundabout. This one was, it's a brand-new bridge. You can tell by the picture up in the upper right that shows the brand-new pavement. If you look really close, you can see our surveyors out there picking up the new information on the bridge. So this was just finished late last year. If you look at the lower left-hand corner, you see the, the new bridge, there was, it's a prefabricated steel bridge with timber decking and support on concrete blocks. And this bridge is 31 and 1/2 feet in span, so you can see for a little scale and comparison that, lower right-hand corner, the previous structure was much, much smaller. All right, and then the third structure I'll be talking about, you can see I'm kind of working around in a clockwise motion, is the Bridge 41415 project. That's just east of Topaz Drive. And this is a couple of pictures of the bridge here. You can see this was added to the state red list in 2016, which means due to its condition, it needs a little bit more made inspections and monitoring of its condition. This is built in 44 years ago, 1980. And it's a pipe arch that's, it's just over 10 feet in width for the span, which means it's a bridge in New Hampshire. So it's 6 feet 9 in height, and it's just over 92 feet long. And you can see the stone masonry, I'm not sure where I should be pointing, but you see the stone masonry for the head wall and the wing walls up in the upper right-hand corner. And in the lower left-hand corner, you can see, that's looking downstream. The first one was upstream. And those, that concrete masonry, those walls extend quite a bit, quite a ways down Oyster River. So.
I personally.
That is just east of, it's the easternmost structure actually in the project area, and just east of Topaz Drive. You can see the dirt driveway there. It shows up in this picture fairly well, but here's a better one where you can see it from street view, sort of. So that's, that's the lower left-hand picture, is the, looking at the slab, concrete slab structure, looking away from Route 4, so that's looking south. And then the one on the right was taken right inside Oyster River, looking downstream. And again, this is a privately owned structure that, we're not looking to work up, but we just want to make you aware that's within the project area. And I'm going to talk a little bit about Route 4. It's a four-rod road, which means about 66 feet in width for right-of-way. The traffic volume is significant here. It's over 12,000 vehicles on average per day, taken back in 2021. Route 4 has two 12-foot lanes, and the shoulders vary in width. The north shoulder is about eight feet on average, but it kind of varies with all the aprons and everything like that. And the south shoulder is about 10 feet. And you can see in the picture to the lower right, that's actually, so the first picture on the upper left is looking towards the Roundabout, and you can see Topaz Drive on the left. And so that's like, the left side is the north side. The picture below that is looking the opposite direction, looking towards Concord. And you can see a lot of the buildings, Topaz Drive is on the right, and there's a lot of structures and buildings right in that area, businesses, residences, and including apartments. And there are overhead utilities on the south side, which, going back to the top picture on the right, you can see the overhead wires. Those, those show up a little bit better in the slide you'll see coming soon, you know, future slide. And there are three intersections within the project area between the culvert to the west and the bridge to the east, and that's Topaz Drive. That lower left-hand picture shows Route 4 going across, and then Topaz to the north, Hickory Lane to the south of Route 4 on the left, and then Meadow Brooks to the next street on the right. Okay, so what are we looking to replace these structures with? We're looking at precast concrete. Two options for the culvert. One is the, I can see the drawing on the top right-hand corner, that's a, that's a rigid frame that's supported on spread footings. And the other one would be, just below that, the drawing shows a four-sided box culvert. Those two type options will also be considered for the, for the bridge itself too, except for, in addition, we'd also be considering a short-span bridge. Also important is, you can see in the picture in the lower right, that there's a wildlife crossing that would probably be required and very helpful in this area. That's actually one being built in that picture. And you can see also, if you look closer, the two drawings to the left of the structure is a similar type elevated path for the wildlife. So design considerations, we did present the other two structures that are not replacement structures, that Topaz Drive and 19 Concord Turnpike. And we just, well, mentioned that these structures will be accounted for in our design. We're very cognizant of them, and we want you to know that because it's going to be part of our analysis, and because it's all, they're all kind of tied together, you know, with the confluence of Caldwell Brook and Oyster River, and then going through the project area. Hydralink capacity, we'll be analyzing that for both replacement structures. The animal crossing, we talked about that a little bit, that's important, and we'll get, actually touch upon that again later. New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the stream crossing rules, we'll be following those. Wetland impacts will be a concern, there's wetlands in the area. Stormwater treatment, I'm sure, you know, that people have a lot of interest in that, so we'll definitely be following through on that. Traffic control, we'll talk about that a bit more in future slides, and of course, So maintenance of traffic. There's a few challenges through this corridor of Route 4 that we're going to have to address. One of them, the first one is the traffic volume. I said it was a high-traffic-volume road, 12,000-plus cars on average per day. We'll be looking at that. The proximity to the Lee Roundabout is another thing. I've said it was like less than three quarters of a mile away from the Roundabout. I'm sorry, I did it ten. Anyway, single access to Topaz Drive and Hickory Lane, that is something we'll have to keep in mind, is limited access to within the project area. And if you look at the top picture, so that's, that's a building on the north side of Route 4. There's parking that's very close to the north shoulder, and that's something we'll have to keep in mind too about the close proximity of islands and parking. And on the left, on the lower picture, you can see on the left side, that's the better picture I promised of the utility, the overhead utilities on the south side of Route 4. And you can see how close the poles are to the south shoulder. We'll be dealing with it right-of-way, it's a little bit narrow through there. Route 4 is a semi-trailer route, so we'll be cognizant of the commercial vehicles that use this corridor as well. And of course, Route 4 is part of the Seabrook Station evacuation route. So maintain that traffic during construction. We're looking at different alternatives. For phase construction, that's one alternative, is looking at either two or three phases. We'll look at the benefits and cons of those. Ideally, we'd have two lanes coming through this corridor of Route 4 during construction. That would likely require temporary widening, and thus would have some right-of-way impacts as well. We'd also consider alternating one-way traffic. As you can see in the picture on the lower right-hand corner, that's what a typical temporary signal would look like. The few things about the alternating signals though is that it's a large traffic volume, it's a lot to handle for a temporary signal, and when you consider also the extra distance between the two replacement structures, that leads to more time for the signal. And of course, the proximity again to the Lee Roundabout, we would watch traffic cues and see, we don't want it to impact the Roundabout. So another one is detour. A detour, there's a, that'd be a closure, so we'd definitely look at accelerated bridge construction to limit the amount of time that Route 4 would be closed and get it back open as soon as possible. There are two detour options, one to the north, one to the south. They're both about the same length. Then one to the north utilizes Route 125 and Route 9 and US Route 202 through Barrington, and the one to the south would utilize Route 125 and 152 through Nottingham. And there, again, it's like I alluded to that a little bit before, you know, the map or the picture down below on the bottom of the slide shows that, you know, you have your culvert to the left, to the west, and then your bridge to the east, and we wouldn't want to isolate all those people on Topaz Drive and Hickory Lane and everyone between the two structures. But there is local route using, you know, Meadow Brook and of course Stepping Stone Road to actually access the, between the structures during construction, and it comes back out on Route 125 south of the Roundabout. Cultural resources. So the historic consulting parties there, that's, so this is a pamphlet that actually is available. This presentation will be on the, right, Tim, on the New Hampshire DOT website? Oh, and you brought one, I'd like to see it. Pass around. This has good information about the historic properties and how people can become a consulting party and how they can be involved in that process for Section 106. Also, I should point out that there's some over 50-year-old buildings in this area that may require an archaeological survey, architectural, I'm sorry, architectural survey before construction, and we do not anticipate archaeological survey being required. I will point out too that these two slides show pictures of Oyster River just downstream of the bridge, and you can see just how far that, if you haven't been out there, how far that stone wall extends past that bridge. And natural resources, there'll be permits required, of course, a wetlands permit and alteration of terrain permit. There are federally and state species that are in this area, such as for the federal, the long-eared northern bat, the long-eared bat, and the, and the small world Pogonia, which is in the lower left-hand picture there. And then the state species include two fish species, three turtles, hog-nosed snake, and of course, the good old New England cotton-tail picture in the lower right-hand corner. And the project area, again, is it's a wildlife corridor, it's part of the Connect Coast Initiative, which shows the more benefit to having that wildlife crossing in the structures that we showed on the previous slides. All right, and with that, I'm going to pass it back to Tim, and he'll talk about cost estimate.
Thank you. I do want to quickly talk about that Section 106 pamphlet. So that is Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. Anyone who has a vested interest in historic property or any entity that has a vested interest, like a historical society or the town, can petition the Federal Highway Administration to be what's called a consulting party. So that's, it gives them an added voice in the process and the mitigation if we do have, if we do negatively impact cultural or historical resources. So cost estimate for the project, currently, there's $4.6 million for construction in the state's 10-year plan. There's no anticipated cost to the town for this project, and we, and we will revise the estimates as we go along and update those numbers. The next steps in the project, like I said, we're in the alternatives analysis phase, so we're even at the very beginning of that. We have some very rough ideas of what we plan on replacing the structures with, but we don't have any thorough designs yet. So that's the next step, is to come up with some more concrete designs for the replacements, and to look at how we're going to replace them, so the traffic control. We also want to present those findings to the Natural and Cultural Resource Agency meetings. That's, those are meetings that the department hosts. They are public meetings, they're held virtually. And then we will continue the public outreach for the project with public informational meetings. Those will be meetings that the department holds here in town, and we will invite all of the abutters and a lot of the other interested parties, potential interested parties. Then we will move on to a public hearing for the project. A public hearing is something we need to do in order to get, in order to get the rights to acquire the right-of-way that are needed for the project, even temporary right-of-way. And then we'll complete the NEPA document, the National Environmental Policy Act document. And lastly, you know, the project will eventually end up in construction, and the construction is currently planned for 2028 for these projects. And so with that, we're coming to the end of the presentation. Big reason we're here today is to inform you about the projects and let you know what's going on, put a face to the name if I reach out and, and I'm looking to talk to anybody, and then also to solicit any feedback. So these are some notes that, from other projects I've done, you know, thoughts on traffic control, past flooding events, emergency response, school bus routes, any historic concerns, bicycle and pedestrian use in the area, any local events that the town might have in the area, utilities, and just any other general concerns. So below that is the project website. The DOT has a project website. I'll be posting this presentation to it in the coming days. We have one person at the department that handles the website, so it takes a little time. And with that, that is the end of our presentation, so if there are any questions or comments from the Select Board, we'd be more than happy to try and answer those now.
Thank you. I thought I saw on a prior slide that you already determined that Section 106 does not apply to this project.
So that'd be the archaeological portion of it. We still have to do the historical review. There are, there are buildings and structures that are over 50 years old, so we're still determining if Section 106 will apply to any of the structures in the area.
Have you done the archaeological study of the area?
I do not know the answer to that. I know we've done desktop review, and from that, I believe it's been determined that there's minimal or very little risk of encountering any archaeological sites.
As you approach the date to begin this, will you, are there steps that you'll take to either by mail or dropping in on them? There's a few businesses, I'm thinking Yellow Dog's Barn would be highly impacted by this because they're on that corridor, and it's a drop-off site for people's pets.
Yeah.
Will you be stopping into those businesses in Barrington that are along that corridor and alerting them that this is coming up?
Yeah, so we typically don't do much outreach beyond the immediate project area, but if there are entities like that, that people think we should reach out to, I can certainly make a contact point. I will say, so as this project moves along, I did send letters to all of the abutting property owners about this meeting, so they knew this meeting was happening. And then when we get to the public informational meetings, I plan on expanding that outreach. So as we mentioned, Topaz Drive and Hickory Lane are both single access points, and there's probably 100 homes or so, plus apartment complexes up on Topaz Drive. I want to make sure that they know about the public informational meetings and they have a chance to attend. So I plan on doing extra outreach for those meetings that the DOT hosts. We didn't want to inundate you potentially with a lot of it.
When you say "butters," do you mean like businesses within the first quarter mile on either side? What do you mean by "butters"?
So "butters" are direct abutters to the project, so they.
Direct only.
Yeah, their, their property would physically abut the project limits.
Okay. And then my very last question has nothing to do with this project.
Okay.
That New Hampshire DOT logo down there, is it copyrighted?
I have no idea. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
That is a good question.
It would be of interest to.
It's in the public domain.
It is.
Yeah, you can't, the town seal, state logos, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a good question.
Say 2026 or 2028? I'm sorry, 2028. I saw that on the agenda that it said 2026. I misspoke. I had changed the ad date, and the document I'd been looking at was the old version, so the correct, the correct construction year would be 2028.
Thank you for the presentation.
If you need to divert traffic, how will you make the decision about Barrington versus Lee? Of course, we wanted to go Lee.
You mean Nottingham, where I live, yeah. I'm a Nottingham resident, so.
Well, there's your answer. Now, we'll determine that.
And my, and my wife does commute down Route 4 every day, so she would be heavily impacted by this. I am not 100% sure, honestly. We would probably look at, you know, where traffic is originating and where traffic is ending from. We would also, maybe we would sign detours for both directions, depending on if people needed to go north or south or something like that. But that is a great question, how we would determine that. And before we set up any kind of detour, we would talk to the town. So we'd come back and specifically talk to you, or we'd go to Nottingham. And also for that, I believe it's Meadow Brook Lane, if we did decide the best interest was to close it, you know, from looking at street view images, it's a very small road. So we'd want to come and talk to the town and make sure that the town was on board with that decision before it happened.
The point, if you do divert, presumably that increase in traffic will affect our highways, our roads.
Yep.
Adversely. Is there compensation then to towns for that increased traffic, those changes?
So on a state route, I do not believe so, and these are, all the detours would be on state routes. For Meadow Brook Lane, I'm not sure. I, I think conversations, I think in previous cases, conversations have had, I do not know at the moment. Hold on.
You mentioned expedited project, what's the timeframe? You may have said it.
Yeah, so we are unsure at the moment. If we have to do phase construction, this will be at least a one-season project. It will take, you know, many, many months. If we did an accelerated project, we don't have a duration necessarily identified yet, but Bunker Creek, just down the road in Durham, we closed Route 4 for that project. And, does anybody, Ron, do you know?
Yeah, I, I think Bunker Creek, we had set up a month, but it was actually done faster
than that. They, contractors can potentially do some work prior to closing the road, and then, you know, do the immediate work in the roadway, open it back up, and then do, you know, the rest of the work. So as I mentioned at the beginning, these are all options that are on the table. We're currently evaluating all of their positives and negatives, and eventually we will come with a recommendation, and that's what will go to the public hearing. And the Select Board will be included on all notices for any upcoming public meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to accept questions from any abutters?
Yes, I think we could accept some questions or comments. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to make a question or comment?
I.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone online? Looks like not. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
You guys.
All right. So we've had an addition to public hearings that was just inadvertently not included, and this is on Flower Drive. It's already been to Planning Board, so I know a little bit about it, but do you want to go ahead?
I will, yes. Sorry, this was added to the materials after printed packets. The printed copies are coming. This is a Classics and Private Road application that is meeting the policy. Department has made recommendations, the Planning Board supported those recommendations. The scope of improvements, it's a $200,000 building permit. The scope of improvements is $20,000. They will be replacing culverts recommended by the road agent and paving a section of the steep hill. And so this is, came with a recommendation from the Planning Board to recommend that the Select Board approve the project.
Sounds like improvements to me.
Yeah, and everybody was on board on Flower Drive, or Road Association representative was actually there to speak to it.
And they're actually making improvements concurrently, so they'll be able to work together. There was some confusion at the Planning Board meeting about the culverts, the culvert that the road agent recommended adding, so not a replacement culvert, but a new culvert, and culverts that the Road Association is in the progress, in process of replacing. I talked to the applicant, and he made it clear that this, that his, the scope that he's intending to complete includes the added culvert that this road agent recommended and the paving project. And so, you know, when we, when the Select Board authorizes the issuance of a building permit, there's a scope that the Select Board authorizes. Generally, it's as recommended by department heads, and so the, whether the Road Association does some of the scope or not, doesn't change the fact that the road is being improved as recommended. as recommended.
Yeah, having listened to this proposal and planning board, and it's a follow up here, I think it's.
So motion to approve.
Public hearing, so we'll accept a public comment first.
That's right. Is there any public comment on the Flower Drive application?
This is map 111 lot six. Doesn't look like there's questions, but if there's anything like that you'd like to add, you're certainly welcome to. If you step up to a microphone or.
Just come up and identify yourself.
Sure.
It, you just have to press the one button there. There you go.
My name's Kevin Brigham. I have property at 246 Flower Drive and I'm also the president of the Road Association there.
Great.
So the only comment that I had is there's a, there's a couple of, a few different things. I know Mark Moreau, the road agent, had been out there. The section that he was talking about as far as the culvert is not the culvert in particular that we are going to be replacing. The section of the pavement of the road that Alex DMP, Property Management, is doing is, I don't know if you're familiar with Flower Drive where Mark Moreau lives, there's a lived, there's a portion of pavement that's going to be reclaimed and resurfaced. Flower Drive Road Association, we, we got a, a grant from DES to do culvert work right after that particular property. And that's where the culvert drainage and other improvements to the runoff at that particular property is going to be located.
So you got a grant, was that all related to the cyanobacteria problem?
Yes, yes.
Any questions?
So the motion.
To accept the project on Flower Drive as presented.
Yep, authorize the issuance of a building permit with the scope of road improvements as recommended by staff and recommended by the planning board.
From map 111 lot six.
Second.
Hard copy.
Gibson, aye.
Scotia.
Capella, aye. Good luck with the project.
Okay, thanks. Do you want me to turn this off again?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you. Cut up on background noise.
Moving along, let's see, we will, let's do the consent agenda and then we'll talk about, yep.
I move, we accept the consent agenda, less item F, Oxford.
Second.
Roll call.
Hard copy.
Gibson, aye.
Scotia.
Capella, aye. All right. So let's look at F, Public Safety Building and Recreation Department Security Improvements.
So I include some details in the town administrator report. The town through the joint loss committee has been doing security audits across facilities. This is really a multi-layered approach to making sure that our facilities adequately protect staff and residents alike. And the, obviously, facilities across Barrington span age and security levels. And building this facility and occupying it really put spotlight on some of the deficiencies we had at other facilities. Happy to get into the specifics, I'd prefer to do that in non-public. But the proposals that you have in front of you are recommendations that came out of the joint loss committee and talking with building principals, you know, the police and fire chiefs and the recreation director about the deficiencies that they've identified as well and the best ways to address them. And so the, what you see in the town administrator report shows that these are two buildings that we're planning to do work with. And so identifying a scope is important. The work at the public safety building won't be interrupted with a renovation or addition, if anything, it'll be added on to. So we'd be establishing a, a foundation to build off of when we potentially do a renovation or addition there. The work at the recreation department would depend very much on whether or not we receive the grant or the library passes. And so we're not looking to move forward that, that portion of the project right now, just earmarking funds. So it, we have money available with the identified scope to move forward with the recreation, the improvement stat facility as well. Any questions?
So it seems like a security system in the rec department area seems very important for the protection of children and the staff. My only question was, was this not factored in when we came up with the original plan that's being presented to our residents at the 1.15? Was this not, this wasn't on our radar, so it is not part of those dollars?
It is not part of those dollars specifically. So the two were happening concurrently. So we had identified these deficiencies and started putting a plan together long before we had pursued the grant opportunity. And the grant opportunity adds space, indoor programming space, and would add to the scope of this security, these security improvements. It is, the additional scope from the addition would be carried by any grant program. This is the scope that would happen, whether there's an addition or not. We would just wait to do this until we know if it's a bigger system or a smaller system.
So I'm just wondering if, if the expansion did not take place, doesn't the rec have enough funds to cover this with the build out that they're doing? So if our voters, say our voters decide that the community build out of our recreation building is not taking place, which I think would be a crazy decision, given that I read that grant and it's an amazing grant and I hope it goes through. But what I'm asking is, if that does not happen, aren't there enough funds in the recreation reserve fund? Unassigned fund balance, I'm not sure what the recreation calls it.
Revolting fund.
To cover this.
So you're saying 150,000 that currently is earmarked if this project goes through.
Well, any funds that they have, it's my understanding they have more than 150,000 there. My question is, don't they have enough to cover this? If we're pulling it from ARPA, when there's funds sitting there for it, I'm just curious why.
Yeah, it's a good question. So I think, I think to broach that subject, the select board and recreation commission should meet and discuss the, the scope and where the select board through the operating budget or the recreation commission through the revolving fund overlap or are separate. So the select board can't spend recreation revolving fund dollars.
Understood.
Yeah, so the recreation commission is responsible for authorizing expenditures from revolving fund. I know from, through the recreation director, that the recreation commission isn't interested in spending a lot more on the building than they already have. They during COVID, they agreed to, they reluctantly agreed to do the wall project, which created a fire separation between the recreation community space, the gym and the food pantry use. And they made it clear at that time that they didn't necessarily feel like it, that was the most appropriate use of the recreation revolving fund dollars, which are user fees. And they have earmarked for strategic planning projects, you know, parks and otherwise. And, but they, they did anyways. Around the same time, they spent recreation revolving fund dollars on the bleacher replacement, which they didn't object to, and the gym floor replacement, which they didn't object to. But the, I think the sentiment from the recreation commission, and I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, but over the last couple of years seems that improvements to the building that aren't specifically recreation, they feel is the most appropriate responsibility of the select board through the operating budget. Things like the furnaces, you know, the select board had budgeted a couple of years ago to replace the furnaces, but then the septic was clogged and the floor needed to be dug up. And so the select board paid for that. So if you're, if the thought is ask the recommission to pay for the security improvements through the revolving fund, I think that would, should be a request that the select board makes. And I would anticipate that the recommission would want to sit down with the select board to discuss.
My suggestion is that we'll know better come March.
No question.
So wouldn't we table this and make that decision whether this is pulled from ARPA funds after that timeframe?
That won't delay the project or cause any interruptions. I was just.
So I would prefer that we approach it that way.
Take the recreation portion of the scope and table the recreation portion until.
Until we know where we're headed.
Okay. I think that's a reasonable approach.
But a motion?
That would be a motion.
Is that a motion just to table or a motion to approve the two?
So I, I mean, quite frankly, I would approve the security system for a public safety officer's building. That, that just seems to make sense. And it certainly makes sense to have security for the children and staff in that environment. But I don't think we have an appropriate amount of information until after the town reviews and makes decisions on what's happening at that building. And at that time, I think we should entertain this idea.
I think it's a great idea.
What, what are the recurring charges? I know some have monthly charges per building. And then what do we get from that, from the, the company versus what does town, what do town employees do as far as the oversight and maintenance and use of the equipment?
Yeah, it's a good question. So what we learned when, so when we built this building, that our managed service provider, our IT company at the time, was willing to do the security components as well. And they were not security experts, but they were willing to do that in addition to everything else. We changed managed service providers, IT companies and realized that it was absolutely in our best interest to have a specialized security company, that that's what they do. It's expensive technology. It, when you need help, you need somebody that knows the system. And around that same time, we realized that each department was using literally four or five different security companies to manage different systems. And that nothing, we talked to one another and it was incredibly inefficient. So we went through a process to identify One Source Security as the, with the technology committee as the security company we wanted to use to consolidate the support and implementation. So to answer your question about the difference between staff and One Source Security, the, anything that staff can do, they do, right? So scheduling the doors to go off on a holiday, that's something that we do. The setting up of the card groups, that's something that we have One Source Security do. So it depends on the level of complexity of, of the task. You also mentioned at the beginning about ongoing costs. So there are licensing costs with the hardware to maintain support for the software. And in some of these cases, there are servers. And so they, those have maintenance contracts, I shouldn't say maintenance contracts, those have ongoing costs, the support costs that are paid for, in some cases for the first three years and in some cases annually. But I have have some information from the town hall. I can get you some specifics about the licensing. But it will be an ongoing cost moving forward. And there was an addition in the operating budget administrative contracts this year for some of the added ongoing costs for the town hall. The budget number decreased because we saved some money with our new IT company, but there was an increase in that portion of it.
They might offer a better deal or give us a incentive to extend that out like three years or something like that?
And that's what we've done where we could. So on, upon initial purchase, buying a three-year license, in some cases you can save a good amount of money.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion to spend funds from ARPA to cover the cost of security improvements at the public safety building.
So including fire and police. Okay, roll call.
Hard copy.
Gibson, aye.
Scotia.
Capella, aye.
And then motion to review and revisit the recreation department's security improvement options after the March vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Hard copy.
Gibson, aye.
Scotia.
Capella, aye. So we'll see that on the agenda soon after the election.
Right, I think that's a great idea.
Great.
Yep, good work.
Number seven, appointments?
Nothing.
All right, staff report?
Yes, I will be quick. The work anniversaries were read at the first meeting in January, the town meeting information. So this is officially now election season. Importantly, tomorrow's election has nothing to do with town meeting. Tomorrow's election is to select the presidential candidates through the presidential primary process. But for our town meeting, we have a warrant webpage, which is, information is being added regularly. The first draft of the voter guide was distributed to the advisory budget committee and select board. And I've received a lot of feedback, which is awesome. That's the reason sending an advanced copy to you all. I've incorporated a lot of the changes recommended and we'll have a, you know, a, a first issue PDF of that document soon, which will be great. The timeline this year is a little bit delayed because the planning board hasn't finished their zoning amendments. So they are meeting on the 25th and will finalize the zoning amendments at that time. Right now, they're considering 20, but all of those might not move forward. And so we have until the 29th to post the warrant. And so we will post the warrant in time. What, one reason that matters to the select board is you will have to sign it in between when it is finalized, the evening of the 25th and when it's posted on the 29th. So sometime over that weekend, you'll receive a docu-sign packet with the final warrant for your signature. We've also clarified some of the language of the warrant articles based on legal review and feedback from the select board and advisory budget committee. The advisory budget committee met since our last meeting and made their recommendation votes on the warrant articles. And so the, anybody who has followed the advisory budget committee will notice two changes in the support from the advisory budget committee. And this is because one of the members couldn't make the meeting and one of the alternates voted in their place. And so that's why we have alternates. It's good, just so happens the alternate had a different opinion than the missing member on two articles. And so as a result, instead of being supported three to two, the library is supported four to one. And the opposite for the Barrington Commons and Town Center Tax Increment Financing District, instead of being supported four to one, it's supported three to two. And so any article that changes at deliberative session is subject to a, a new recommendation vote by the select board and advisory budget committee. But if nothing changes at deliberative session, there's no new votes. So, and, and I guess to put a bookend on that, we expect the library article to change at deliberative session based on the friends of the library voting to send a letter saying, hey, this money is as good as yours. We just need to wait for the CD to mature. And so there will be a, likely be a recommendation vote after deliberative on the library article. It's possible that if the member that was absent at the last meeting is present, then the vote would go to three to two. So just full transparency.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Quick question, there's a petitioned warrant article. Does the board at that deliberative session give any opinion whether it's recommended or not?
The select board has already done that and that will be listed on the warrant going into deliberative session. I don't expect that the select board will present the petitioned warrant article. Typically, the moderator recognizes the primary petitioner, but the select board could certainly make a statement or speak to the article.
And modifications to the article could be through any town resident?
Any town resident. So if the select board, the, for petition warrant articles, the select board has in the past agreed ahead of time, wouldn't have to be at this meeting, we could do this at the, no, it would have to be in this meeting, excuse me.
Yeah.
Kind of forget where we are. The select.
The numbers, the concept I'm in agreement with, I think it should be a larger.
So if you want to convince the rest of the select board that that's a good idea and a good enough idea that the select board introduced that amendment, then it could certainly be a select board sponsored amendment introduced at deliberative session. If you didn't want to do that, or if you couldn't convince the rest of the select board, you could certainly do it as a resident.
So we can make a motion right now at this meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That the select board recommend that the number of people assigned go from three and three, not two and two?
Yes.
So I would make that motion.
So three, three and one instead of two, two and one?
Correct.
Three and one.
Three, three and one, yeah. For a board of seven, yeah.
Yeah.
With one alternate from each, appointed by each board.
Yeah, so total of nine at meetings.
Uh, yeah. Seven voters.
Okay, moved and seconded?
Roll call.
Hard copy.
Gibson, aye.
Mantra, aye. Scotia, aye.
Capella, aye.
So I will prepare a warrant article amendment to be introduced by the select board as an official amendment presented by the select board. And I'll let the moderator know and he'll likely entertain that at the beginning of discussion or after it's presented.
This, this warrant article will also be in the school, so choose to make it as an individual, I mean, school board meeting, I would. individual, the school board meeting, I would-
Okay. I'm gonna leave that to you, Dan.
And the school board did vote at their last meeting not to recommend the article? Excuse me?
I went to these meetings, and now I don't get to report on them.
Excuse me, Mr. MacGyver. Please let, no.
Please strike that.
Yeah, please.
Strike that.
Yeah, the jury will ignore that very much.
All right, have we gone through January? Well, I'll wrap this with discussion with this. Okay, January work anniversary?
Yes, I just also wanted, oh, we already did that. I just want to mention open offices. The filing period is January 24th through February 2nd.
Is that when someone becomes an actual candidate for the town of Barrington?
Yes.
Can someone be a candidate before that timeframe?
What do you mean?
Can someone be a candidate, an active candidate for office before that date?
Not official until the filing period?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Deliberative session, as you know, is on the 3rd, so the Select Board will need to be there. And again, there'll be a meeting posted immediately following the deliberative session, so don't run away. And the ballot session is on the 12th, from eight to seven. Any questions? Moving on, tomorrow is the primary election. So I'm very glad that we had all of the Select Board members and quite a few of the Budget Committee members sign up to staff the information table at the primary election. Our table's right at the top of the stairs as people come in. And we have some big poster boards that the Select Board and Budget Committee members can use as visual aids, helping residents understand the over 40 warrant articles that they'll be voting on. I have some printed copies of the voter guide in its current condition, not to be handed out, but so that members can use as talking points for the different articles, because again, there's over 40.
Can you watermark them draft, so that we know not to hand them out?
I made the mistake of doing the formatting so that those like text boxes were kind of in the front, and at 2:00 this morning, I couldn't figure out how to get the draft to go like on top of that, but below the text-
Oh, you were trying, okay.
Oh, I tried.
Okay, thank you.
So I will, I will bring, I'll do something to the copies-
Yeah, red marker, just so we don't hand them out. And if, God forbid, we ever did, or someone that we-
I did go to the timing of your email.
Yes.
Like, oh, Connor, poor Connor.
So, I mean, it's not the end of the world if they do get out. That same information is currently on the webpage, 2024 warrant. And so I'd like a little bit more polished version before we go to the press, you know, and print, spend money printing copies of it.
It's very well done.
Please. Could we put the Select Board recommendations above the ABC?
We could do that if you'd like to. I presented it in the way that it's typically presented on the warrant articles. So it usually goes warrant article language, Budget Committee recommendation, and then the final recommendation's the Select Board. And so I presented it in that order because that's how warrant articles are always written. I, I understand your point. I did, for lack of good justification, to do it a different way. I just did it the same order that it's always been in.
Is mending the table count double duty so that we're also meeting our obligations to be present for the election, or voting?
Yes.
But we don't have to be present for this.
Technically, so we need to, we need to have pro temps, yes?
So Danan isn't 100% wrong. So what the Constitution says is state elections. And so I think there's an argument to be made that this isn't a state election because it's the selection of a presidential candidate, not a, not state candidate. The moderator and the town clerk are steadfast, in their opinion, as recommended by other organizations, that the Select Board should be at every election regardless of what it is and serve as election officials.
That's fine.
And so the Select Board should be there.
At the table counts.
But at the table counts, yes. The moderator and the town clerk are of the opinion that the Select Board should be staffing election positions, accepting ballots, directing people in the hallways. But the, I think the, being available to residents at the information table is a strong civic duty of the Select Board at the primary election.
Perfectly, perfectly appropriate place for us.
So moving on, this is really exciting. We don't need to get into it, but I wanted to get this information to you so that you had it for when it comes up again. I had an awesome meeting with the engineer that did a lot of the design work for the Hard Rock development behind Liberty Truck, which is now Allegiance Trucks. And there are a lot of opportunities for the town there for generating revenue through tax base and through potential commercial and industrial development. And probably the most important piece of information that came out of this meeting is it's possible to realize that tax value without the environmental impacts that everybody was so worried about. So there was a lot of opposition to the project because of the excavation. The excavation was only really part of the project because the outfit the town partnered with in a development agreement was in the gravel business and wanted to excavate the material and have that material. It's possible to simply build on top of the terrain that's there and accomplish many of the same objectives, and without the concern for draining the cedar swamp and the water supply in the area. And so what I've asked is the engineer to prepare a scope of services, scope and fee, that I'll bring back to the Select Board, to look at what we could do with that property. But we talked about everything, including taking a large portion of the property and trying to negotiate a solar power purchase agreement, and talking with butters that might be interested in some property that is separate from the main developable area separated by wetlands. So exciting opportunities and more information to come.
I thought you did an excellent job obtaining all of the prior study and materials that had taken place on that property. So thank you for thinking five steps ahead.
Great, thank you.
Wasn't it Hard Rock that was gonna build some equipment storage? Somewhere along there. Got a different, that was a different-
So, yeah, so Liberty Truck, Liberty Truck, okay. Taking one step back, the previous owners of Liberty Truck, Pro, P-R-O-U-L-X, was in a development agreement with the town to do the same thing that Hard Rock was. That development agreement failed. The town entered a new development agreement with Hard Rock, and there was a side agreement with Liberty Truck where we actually traded land, that part of it happened, and the town secured access rights to the land that we traded with Liberty Truck to be able to come in for access. And they had plans to build out that, once we built in the access, they were gonna build out that part of their lot. And so those easements are still in place, but there's no commitment or requirement to-
So they're not moving forward with that part of it?
I suspect once we start developing plans, part of that process will be re-engaging the new owners. Allegiance Trucks is now a multinational company, where Liberty Trucks, and before that, it was locally owned, there were, so we haven't had conversations with them, but that will be part of the process. Good question, though. There's a lot of history there. A lot of history. Okay, moving on. Volunteer recognition application. So you remember, this is something we talked about last summer. This is just a simple process to solicit nominations for volunteers that provided great service to the town. So in your packet, you have a copy of the nomination form. It's available on the website. I've sent it out to all of the chairs and members of committees, so that if they know anybody, they can send in nominations, and nominations are due by the 31st.
Individuals can also nominate?
Yes, individuals or groups, yes. Good question. And there was a question asked if a couple could be nominated. And I said, I suggested that they submit the nomination, and the Select Board could choose how to handle the nomination of two people concurrently.
It's all right, we can speed things up later. There's a meeting at 5:00.
All right, moving along.
Okay, so land use chapter, the master plan. So there are still some finalization steps, and we're, the consultant is preparing a final copy completed of the master plan that has all the updated sections. But we wanted to get you a copy of the final draft of just the land use chapter, so you had it with the updated appendices. So you have that copy in your packet. And I was actually just having a conversation today. I think as the Select Board, as we get past March and we start looking ahead, maybe planning our next strategic planning session, I think focusing on implementation of the master plan should be the top priority of the Select Board, integrating the work that we do specifically to components of the master plan. And so you'll be seeing more of that.
But this update doesn't include the housing?
Separate chapter.
That's coming, because we have about that report yet back from Stratford County.
And I think, and this was Joyce's suggestion, to push it out, you know, as soon as it's available, it's, it can be a lot to track because we're constantly updating chapters. And a lot of times, we've started an update process before we get the final draft back of the one we just updated. And so there's a lot of moving parts. So making sure that we present it in an organized way, it would be helpful, and that's on me.
It'd be nice, given the developments and discussions going around town, that we get the housing one implemented and incorporated as soon as we can.
Yeah, I'd agree. There have been some scheduling issues with that one. It's nice to see in the recommendations. I mean, these are things that we've talked about, or other committees in town have talked about. Some of these are along the way to be implemented. Yeah.
Great. Any more discussion about that? Awesome. More to come, for sure.
Municipal Officer Administrator Cottle?
All I have is a request to sign the meeting minutes that were approved during the consent agenda. Okay, you'll pass that around? It'll be on DocuSign this later.
Great. Any old business?
Tiffany, for the tables that we're gonna have, do you guys have any signage you're preparing or thinking about, like for the Select Board? Do we have an Ask Barrington?
Just you wait.
All right. Figured you did, but I-
And we'll have maps of the proposed town commons.
Sure.
Yes.
If they throw a bomb and hit the thing, do we go into the bank?
No water.
That also.
Not the middle way down.
At some point tonight, we're going into non-public.
Yes.
Could we begin that by speaking with one of the department heads that is present and available in reference to something from a few months back regarding personnel?
Personnel, okay. Just needed the topic.
Sorry.
That be appropriate?
Thank you.
Other old business?
So new business, so I'll take over on this. This discussion came up on Planning Board when there was a proposal, which has not gone forward and will not go forward, about assisted living in, really, that property around the town commons. And one of the Planning Board members was adamant that we should not approve an assisted living because elder population have more medications in their urine, so we have more metabolites and more possible effects to the aquifer. So I actually did some research to see what that was all about. But anyway, it is true municipal systems can screen, or can filter some of those things where septic tank cannot. But it got me in that research, looking at over-the-counter medications can also have an effect on aquifers. And there's now, you're starting to see it in some of the pharmacies around where they have a box about the size of a town mailbox, where people can drop off over-the-counter medications.
Expired or non-used.
So we talked about whether that was something we can do in Barrington, and it's really only in that level of discussion yet. We haven't yet talked with waste management about what fees for disposal of that. I mean, I think some medications are incinerated, some might require something different. But wanted to get a sense, I think it would be a good service to, because most of us just throw that stuff either down the toilet or it ends up in waste.
Or we turn it in once a year to the police department.
Well, but they take opioids. This would be the non-prescription, things that aren't as part of that.
I definitely think we should study it. And also, in reference to that, at New Hampshire Municipal Association's annual meeting, one of the classes that I took talked about air quality as well. So you're talking about water protection, and now I'm gonna bring up the fact that we need to do an air quality study in various areas of Barrington, and then consider zoning that stops any, that stops any organization or industry coming here that would have a negative impact on our air quality. I think that that's an important thing that we learned at that annual meeting, and I would definitely suggest something we explore.
And I think agriculture is exempt from that.
I have no idea. We were specifically talking about plastics recycling facilities. There was a small town in northwestern New Hampshire that has been, their planning board is having to deal with whether to allow that type of facility, because they do not have in place an air quality study, and because they have not addressed the impact on air. We, I don't recall that we have zoning that says, don't bring an industry that will impact air or water in a negative way. And those are ways that, from a zoning perspective, we can protect our residents.
We can add that to the agenda of a future meeting, and we'll present some materials and discuss it further. Relative to the over-the-counter medication and Dropbox, is there a sense from the Select Board that we'll do some more research and come up with some proposals? The transfer station administrator and the police chief are both kind of excited about the idea. Transfer station administrator thinks it's possible that she could find a location at the transfer station soon to install something and work with the appropriate agencies for disposal. So we can get some more information about that. And the police chief suggested that it's something that we might be able to consider integrating into the renovation or addition to that building, incorporating something. And it looks like he's probably interested in speaking to it if he comes up to the microphone.
I'm gonna wanna do a little more-
Are you agreeing?
Mm-hmm. Green. Because people are gonna dump controlled drugs in that box. I think it's going to have to be in a location where we can monitor and it's secure by RSA. Most likely, all the ones that I'm aware of are at PD slash public safety buildings or a medical facility, which are both, again, there's licenses and whatnot for the controlled drug section of this. I just, I don't believe, people are gonna dump oxy in there. People are gonna dump old painkillers. They're gonna dump old, you know, name, pick your poison, literally.
Their dogs trim it all.
Right, yeah.
Also, when they're, but they don't know that.
So I wanna do a little research, just because this isn't something I'm 100% certain of, so I'm talking outside my lane, but my gut tells me this is gonna have to be in a secured, monitored location. And again, monitored only for the fact of when slash if something happens. Like, I wouldn't stick it in the PD bathroom in the lobby. Right now, we don't have a lot of room in the lobby, but the bathroom's right there. I wouldn't stick it in there because it's not on camera, and somebody went in to use the bathroom, and all of a sudden, you know, the tramadol that somebody dropped in there, somebody fishes out. I'd want it in the corner of the lobby, just under observation, so that if something did happen, we'd have a way to address that scenario. A little bit of homework on my part. Happy to do it, because I think it's a great idea. Lee has done it. There are several other locations that have done it. It's literally gonna be a conversation with Chief Draughnsfield, and I'm sure he can brief me on all the specifics.
Great, thanks for that.
So if there's support from the Select Board, we'll put the chief to task on that? I'm seeing a lot of head nods?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, great, thank you.
What's that new weapon on your left hip? Oh, at me? Never felt, yeah, sorry.
So charge his phone.
Fast charge.
Item 11, Select Board Member Reports and Concerns. And of course, we know Danan doesn't have much to say.
Yeah.
So the zoning board heard three cases last week. One of them was determined to not be needed, and the applicant's funds were returned to them. The other one was the issuance of relief from setbacks on Cape Road to add a small garage to a home. And the third was an administrative appeal that was upheld so that the Assistant Zoning Administrator's interpretation of zoning law was determined to be correct.
The Energy and Conservation Committees both met since we were here last. They both planned to have tables at the primary on the 23rd tomorrow. They were both discussing, the Energy Committee was discussing the community power. Something else came up with the Energy Committee that was kind of interesting. Stratford County, Matt Towne was presenting on all of the weatherization and energy savings that's available through Stratford County. And it's largely underutilized. And so- And so, we're looking at ways to form the Barrington residents who could benefit from that, to apply for this service. And we were going to reach out to the town, the office that deals with residents that come in who can't afford electric bills or oil bills, so that we can have that, those pamphlets, information available to direct to them. So, I think Deb Office, we're gonna connect with her.
Quick question, is that the program through Community Action on 577 Cent for that?
Okay. Yep. And then, on Conservation, ongoing discussions about Coote Farm and some of the other developments. Richardson Dam, they do plan to move forward with the environmental impact study to get that going. Yeah, that's about it.
Do you want me to go, Danan? Yeah, okay, yeah.
No, actually, the School Board met Tuesday, and they voted on their warrant articles, their $29.5 million operating budget, three to, oh, there were only three members there, so three to zero, as did their Advisory Budget Committee. They have $100,000, $100,000 facilities capital reserve, $1,000 special educational capital reserve, both out of their fund balance. They recommended three to zero. And the Joint ABC, like, Chief's presentation, they voted zero to, zero to three, not approved. Their deliberative session is the 10th of February after our... Interesting, they, Dana did a, used the same calculations they used for that presentation they made to us about student housing. And based on, I don't know what number, Farm, they think, 100 children. In fact, they need at least six teachers and... Interesting. Or have ratio, so many teachers. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. I'm not sure the calculations are... Transfer Station, today at 2:30, discussed how to monitor the traffic that was up for DMA is gonna give an update on the feasibility. Rex Plastic, meet again on the 26th of February. Library Trustees meeting a couple hours ago, which blew my wonderful report. I don't want to bother to go, but no.
But repeated anyway for the record.
Yeah, exactly. The, interesting, the New Hampshire State Library recommends of not giving non-residents electronic access to our popular... They're now cutting that down to two sessions on. That's really expensive service that they have. Are some leaks in the building, over the stacks. They're also into the rec. And they checked, they used about 89% of their budget. The foundation has over $350,000 now in hand and available. They think today or yesterday, they got another $5,000 check. That doesn't include the ones we talked about that are in... They may have almost $400,000 when we go to delivery. This, this is kind of interesting, Just Desserts meet February, you get to go, you have to sign up because there are only 85... Vote on this, four to six. Sorry. I think it was...
Rec Department, they have their winter activities going on and winter sports. Haven't heard much about the Class 6 Private Road Committee. I still think that's being looked over by legal. And Technology Committee is same same.
Not much to report from Planning Board. Our meeting was canceled due to weather on last Tuesday. And just that Thursday night, that's why we're having a public hearing on the Thursday night, so we can get the warrant, which are many.
I should add too, the Town Lands Committee does plan to start back up. And A.J. Dupierre's reached out to the members, and we're setting up dates, so.
One thing I wanted to add, which is exciting relative to the Community Center Grant Program, is we actually connected with the CEO of Community Action Partnership, and they, we have a memorandum of agreement with them that if we receive the grant and have the indoor programming space, they will set office hours in Barrington on a monthly or maybe even bimonthly basis to come and be available for residents. And we talked about maybe scheduling that with the food pantry being open, so they can come and talk about the weatherization programs and other things, which would be a fantastic service to residents.
Great collaboration.
Thank you.
Moving into public comment, our second public comment. Please come up and state your name.
Your address. And then, speak fast.
Rick Walker, 24 Green Hill. While I respect your opinion of Motor 7 member commission, my concern is, is that you won't get the support on the School Board side. And my question would be, is if that one doesn't change and the town one does, that may be enough for them to turn around and say, "Well, it's not the same thing." So, if it passes on both sides, I think there's concern on their side. I'll just leave it at that. I was disappointed that they didn't support it. I put my best pitch forward. I would just ask you folks to consider ramifications of if you make a motion and it passes on the town side and it doesn't pass on the school side, I would hate to see something happen in which it wouldn't be able to be implemented after. Because it's advisory, certainly, the Select Board after, if it passes, the Select Board and the School Board could sit down and have the discussion about whether it should be additional members. I'm not against additional members. My concern is, is that you won't get the vote on the other side or to match the town side. Thank you.
People want to discuss this a little bit?
I think you make a good point, but I think...
I feel that's a little sneaky too, though. Like, trying to get it adopted and then knowing that you want to change it. I don't feel that four members and an alternate is enough people to digest that much money.
Or five members and two alternates.
Well, regard, yeah, I think it, I mean, I think it's too small of a group.
I think that if it, if it does pass, either one of us, I guess it might pass on the school side too, is that we have basically a...
I'm not sure that we hold any more weight. If we change it at deliberative and that's how it's presented...
Actually, it would come and say, "Which do you favor?" As Chief points out, it's an advisory, and so, you have to sit down and discuss with them against any, so.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying, Dan, is they're against it already.
That's right.
And I understand that. But if we're suggesting that, yes, should it occur, and the Select Board is saying, "Yep, it should occur," then, in fact, it should be bigger than it is, and I don't think we should bait and switch it on the residents. I think they should know.
That's what I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
On that. And we can present that as an amendment at their deliberative session on the 10th. Either the people there will vote for it or against it. Part from the School Board will vote against it, I'm sure. They can vote, they can present it to the population. Even if they don't accept that amendment, I think that doesn't change the vote. I see Rick's concern, but...
Any other public comment online? Doesn't look like it. Okay. So, we will entertain a motion to go into non-public for personnel reasons.
I'd make that motion, Madam Chairperson.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Out of call by?
Gibbs Knight.
Cap Yaloway. Note this. Thank you. 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 So we are ready to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
All right.
One second.
All right, roll call.
I'll call by.
Gibsoni.
Segosa.
Captain Yaloi, meeting adjourned.
We adjourn.